All right, so this is Monday, June 8, 2020, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen meeting. We will go right to our way of doing business here. So Agenda Item Number One, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 8, 2020 Public Meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physical rules to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv. As a preliminary matter, this is Leah Fabian, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I will do Justice Selectmen's office right now. So Rich LaCamera, Selectmen.
Here.
Maureen Candido, Town Administrator.
Here.
And Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Administrator.
Here.
All right, and the rest we will do as we get there. Let's see, this open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, which you can find posted with Agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. So this meeting, we will take comments via Facebook, correct? Correct. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Let's see, let's go over some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please also remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So, any objection to going out of order and doing the police first, I mean, the fire first, Rich, or?
No, I'm fine.
Mike, is that okay with you, Chief O'Brien?
I'm happy about that.
You're happy about that, okay. So, we have a request from the Fire Chief, Mike O'Brien, for the appointment of two call firefighters. Take it away, Chief O'Brien.
Okay, oops, I'm sorry. Thank you for the time today to present these two applicants. Our first applicant is Ally Andrews. She comes here from Lakeville. Dad is a middleboro firefighter, and he also owns a repair shop on Main Street. Ally has a bachelor's degree from Bryant University in marketing communication. She's also currently enrolled in EMT Basic Course with Boston EMS. She's done her homework. She's ridden along with us for maybe four or five times, been around the building, and that's what compelled her to apply. She's a great personality. She fits in very well with the crew, and I'm very happy, I was very happy to receive her application. Our other applicant is Meg McGinn. Meg is currently a freetown on-call firefighter. Meg is also applying for on-call status here at Lakeville. She is a certified firefighter, one and two. She is currently in EMT Basic. She's enrolled in a paramedic program, and she has two years under her belt in the fire service. So she's an experienced, has some experience as a firefighter and providing patient care, and her ambition is to be a full-time firefighter, and I'm very happy to have her application as well.
All right, so I make a motion that we appoint Allison Andrews and Megan McGinn to be call firefighters upon the successful completion of a department-approved physical examination, a physical abilities test, and a one-year probationary period. If appointed, the term will expire July 31, 2021.
LaCamera, second.
Any conversation, Rich?
No, we're glad that we continue to add to our call service, and it's nice to see some of people that come in with some experience too, so that's great.
Yep, I agree with that. So, all those in favor, Fabian, I?
LaCamera, I.
Welcome to both Allison and Megan. This would be the time at a real meeting where you could come up and we could meet you personally and shake your hand, so we'll have to do that someday, but welcome to both of you. Rich, anything?
No, I'm all set. I think it's great.
Okay, pretty easy. Maureen?
Congratulations to you both. I look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Anything else? Right?
Yep, I appreciate your time. Like I said, this is kind of an exciting appointment. It kind of signifies a transition from us going for quantity and now going towards quality, being selective about who we allow in our call department, and I'm pretty excited to have both of them. So thank you very much for appointing them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, um, let's see, we will go back to, it has announcements here, but I'm not, oh, hold on, let me find my announcement page, unless you have it and you want to read them, Rich, but if not, might take you a sec.
No, I don't have it because we're having trouble with our email, as you know, so.
Oh, all right.
You got it?
I found it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to include the memo from the Clear Pond on, from the Park Commission under announcements.
What was that? I did just print something off there, so, yeah. Okay, so let's do this. First announcement, response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, early voting by mail is available for elections held before June 30, 2020. It's possible that's changed, I can't remember, but anyways, we're still doing early voting, though. We recommend that voters take advantage of this option, an early vote by mail for the annual town election scheduled for June 16, 2020. You can obtain an early voting ballot by sending a signed request to the town clerk or officer by filling out and returning the early voting application available on the town's website. Application by mail, dropped off in silver box in front of the town hall, or submitted by email to eldrane@lakevilleMA.org if your signature is visible on the application. Your early voting ballot must be received by the town clerk before the polls close 8:00 PM on Election Day. So, once you get that application, you get it to the town clerk's office, then they will mail the ballot to you, and then you need to get it back to the town clerk by 8:00 PM on Election Day, June 16. The annual town election will be held on June 16, 2020, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp. That's our usual voting place, June 16. The town will be holding an annual and special town meeting on June 23 at Aponequid High School. This year, the annual town meeting will come first, beginning at 7:00 PM, followed by the special meeting at 8:00.
Madam Chair, I think we should add for residents that the annual and special town meeting warrant, website, under news, they'll be able to look at it and find them there.
Okay, sorry, I have a barking dog, hold on. I'm sorry. Okay, could you repeat that again, please? There was a lot of static on the line, too.
We need to let residents know that the warrants for the annual and special town meeting are on the website, on the homepage, under news. They can go there and click on them to view the warrants.
Okay, thank you. All right, also, the, I will, I am going to announce the decision by the Parks Department. On Thursday, June 4, the Lakeville Park Commission held a virtual meeting and discussed the upcoming 2020 season at Clear Pond Park. It is with heavy hearts the Lakeville Park Commission passed a motion, two to one, to close Clear Pond Park for the 2020 season. This decision was made after reviewing information in regards to the safety of our staff and visitors, funding for the season, and the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. The Commissioners felt the safety of the staff at Clear Pond Park was paramount and could not be fully guaranteed during the uncertain time, especially if an emergency situation required the staff to respond. Commission was also financially incapable of funding Clear Pond for the season. Commission has been proud to fund Clear Pond Park for our residents over the past several seasons. This year's loss of revenue has made funding for 2020 season not possible, particularly with the additions of needed safety measures to open the pond appropriately. So, just as, you know, they stated here, because the Parks Commission has lost a lot of revenue because they had to cancel all their functions and everything that was planned, we would have been in a huge deficit had we opened Clear Pond Park. Anyway, it's not a decision that, you know, anyone really wanted to make, and definitely one that most of us didn't take lightly, we understand, you know. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, review and vote on annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants. Special in the annual town meeting will be on June 23. Now, do we need to read them all? Can someone tell me?
No.
So it's enough to say that you can see them on the website, is that correct?
Vote to approve the annual and special town meeting warrants for June 23, 2020 as presented.
Okay, what Tracy said, vote to approve the annual and special town meeting warrants for June 23, 2020 as presented, and like Tracy said, they are available on the website. Rich, do you want to second me on that, or no?
You're muted, Rich.
Okay, here I am. How's that? LaCamera, second.
All right, any discussion on this, Selectmen, LaCamera?
No, it's all set, you know, the, there's been multiple versions of this, and we're trying to push ahead, you know, to have the annual and special town meeting on June 23, and I assume in the new business, we'll, we'll discuss the quorum, you know, situation as well.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't really, the only question I have is the transfers that are in the back will show up also for, on the website, right?
The transfers, where?
The transfers that we're making, people will, no, those won't be available.
The transfer, well, what we're going to be doing is that we have the warrant review next Monday night, and at that time, Maureen and the town accountant are working on those transfers, and most of those transfers can be done jointly with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, so I think that's the plan, Maureen?
Yep, we finished it up, it is, it's actually in your packet right now, at the end of your packet, on pages six and seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich, I forgot, you don't have the packet. So there, the transfers are in the back.
Yep, the transfers are in the back, and right now, it's only one small transfer, and the other ones are all transfers, and then the, and then the free cash transfer. So, yeah, we'll have that all when we go through, and everyone will be able to see which individual ones after we vote it, and I can always share it on the screen at the time to make it a little bit more interactive for the people at home when we're working on it with the, with the Finance Committee.
Okay, so, at the warrant review, everyone will have the numbers, correct? Okay, I know they're on this packet, but I wasn't sure what was posted because I didn't have a chance to look on the website, so, all right, all those in, go ahead, Rich.
Nothing's been posted on the website yet until we approve this, so that'll be tomorrow, just so you know.
Yeah, well, the materials for the meeting should have been posted, right?
No.
They were.
They were?
Yes, the Selectmen's packets.
Okay, all right.
Oh, in the packet, I'm sorry, but not posted on the website is the, okay.
So, under.
They've been posted on the website already, because by law, I'm supposed to have them up on Thursday, so they went up on Friday.
Okay, okay, but as long as with the, as long as the public will be able to see the amounts by warrant review, because I really want to try to do public comment in some way, shape, or form for warrant review.
Madam Chair, I just want to take a second to interrupt you to ask Kevin or Craig if there has been any comments on Facebook?
No comments as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I haven't seen any, oh, Maureen's doing them, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's it, Rich, all those in favor of the warrant as presented, the two warrants, Fabian, I?
LaCamera, I.
Okay. Item Number Four, discuss the vacancy on the Open Space Committee. So, there is a vacancy on the Open Space Committee. At one point, the Open Space Committee had asked us to appoint someone as an associate member, but there really wasn't a spot for an associate member, so now there's actually a spot for a full-time vacancy, so they have someone who's been following along, and Dr. Young, I believe his name is, has told Open Space that he would like to fill the full-time vacancy, but we have a note here that we have not advertised the vacancy yet. Does the Board want to advertise the vacancy? So I'm not really sure what the protocol is, if we have to advertise, or if they can appoint someone that has been participating. Does anyone have an answer for me?
Well, I know the previous boys have done it both ways. I, I, I know that Dr. Young wanted to be an associate, so, and he was going to be voted an associate if we had a position, so if you recall, we had, you know, opened that position a while ago, and he was the only one that was really interested, so I will make a motion that we appoint Dr. Young as Young, as a, as a full-time member of the Open Space Committee.
Okay, I'll second that motion, and I do know that, you know, he was at one point the only person that was interested, so I feel as though it has been, you know, advertised in the past. All those in favor of appointing Dr. Young to the full-time vacancy? I'm not sure when his term would expire, though, Tracy, you'll have to help me with that.
Um, we'll put it as, as soon as July 31, 2020.
Okay.
So this July, Tracy?
Yeah, just so that I can now keep him, and then, yeah.
Then he'll go in with all the other appointments.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, okay, all those in favor, Fabian, I?
LaCamera, I.
All right, um, back to my agenda here. We are at new business, so, under new business, I have a couple of things. One is that we do know that the town is involved with the Assawampset Pond Complex, and there is, that, that's the organization that's received a $100,000 grant that was awarded to Sertped to do a study, a water study on the whole complex. So, we were asked by Nancy Yates if we could write a letter in support of the ongoing work, and I don't have a problem asking Maureen Candido to write a letter on that, on, reflecting that. Rich, I don't know if you want to make that, or, so, it says, "A letter of support for the APC management team to apply for the second grant round to improve the ecological functions of the APC in order to alleviate floodwater impacts and implement the action plan." This is in all the member towns municipal vulnerability plans, so it is a regional project.
I'll make a motion that we send that letter in support of applying for this grant.
All right, I second that, although, any other conversation?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, all those in favor?
I did read the letter, so you know, Tracy had sent it to my personal email, so.
Okay, all those in favor, Fabian, I?
LaCamera, I.
All right, and I will be attending, I haven't gone to the last two meetings because they've just been overlapping with all other kinds of things, but I will be attending that meeting of the APC, so, Rich, if you want an update from me, I can give you that at the meeting. On Wednesday. So many meetings. All right, under business, I don't know if anything's changed on Lakeville Hospital or Lakeville Country Club.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yep.
We have more new business to be done.
Okay.
The two application requests for the temporary licenses to dine and serve alcohol outside.
Okay, sorry, I missed those. All right, so we have one, going back to new business, we have one from the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Carl Mason Manager, and that is, do we have an address?
It is two.
County Road.
Yeah, that one on County Road, right?
Yes.
And then we have the Back Nine Club LLC, Doing Business House, the Back Nine Club, Rachel Brooks Manager, which is.
And they are at 17 Heritage Hill Drive.
Okay, so, temporary expanded club license. This, of course, is new authorization that has been given us due to COVID-19 from the state to approve these temporary expanded club licenses for people to operate to some degree outside, with, following all the Board of Health requirements that are in place, correct?
I make a motion, I make a motion, we approve these two temporary licenses for these, for the Eagles Club and for the Back Nine.
I second that.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt one more time, and having, having the town administrator sign these licenses for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, got that, Tracy?
Yes.
All right, I will second that. Any other conversation? No, these are temporary, and these are all according to all those guidelines that came from the state, so this is not something that your local Board of Selectmen have decided that's coming from the state, that we're just authorizing our local to do that. Anything else, Maureen, Tracy?
Just to let you know, Tracy and I kind of scrambled because we got the information last week on a, what, on a Thursday, Tracy, and then we came up with a plan on a Thursday and Friday, and we have the application right on our website for, for people. Tracy sent out letters to everyone with the victualler's license and liquor license to make sure that everyone was aware that we, they were able to have outside seating at their disposal, at their disposal for some occasions, and that we're up to date currently on everything that they've asked for us, and then after they submit everything, I'll double-check on their documents, their attestation, I can attestation document, and their checkoff documents for the Board of Health.
Okay.
Yep, but everything they need is, is complete. Tracy has it all squared.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
In regards to Selectman LaCamera's motion, I think we need to expand on that motion. I sent suggested motions in the email, but I don't think Rich has it, so, just because these are going to the ABCC, and we want to make sure that they're official, the motion for the Eagles could be to approve the temporary expanded club license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 3994, to include an outside dining area consisting of 10 picnic tables for no more than 56 occupants for a period to expire November 1, 2020, or until the Governor's Emerg.
Okay, I think I heard most of that.
Yeah, we're having, we're having internet issues.
Okay, so if we can amend the motion to be reflected that way, is that the same for Lakeville, for the Back Nine, or is that different?
No, the Back Nine one is a different motion.
So we'll do the Eagles first, so let's amend that motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Fabian, I?
LaCamera, I.
Let's now work on the other one. All right, Tracy, do you want to read the way it should be? We have to state the part about the bathrooms, too?
We'll try. Okay, so, the second motion would be to approve the temporary expanded common victualler license for the Back Nine Club, LLC, DBA, the Back Nine Club, to include an outside dining area of a 60 by 40-foot tent with seating for no more than 50 occupants for a period to expire November 1, 2020, or until the Governor's Emergency Order is rescinded, whichever comes first.
All right, I will make that motion. All right, I will make that motion as Tracy said it.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any other conversation? I don't have it. That one has a tent. I thought we read.
Yes, that one will have a 60 by 40 tent.
I, I thought I read somewhere.
Yes, it's a 60 by.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Fabian?
La Camera, I.
All right. Okay, is that it? For new business now?
Uh, that is it for those two licenses? Yes.
Okay. So we will just, if any more come in, we will just handle them as they come in.
Yes.
Okay, just, we'll get them on the agenda as, and then handle them as they come in.
You are, you are meeting Friday?
Yep.
So I'm gonna let the licensees know that the Selectmen do have a meeting scheduled for Friday. So if they're anticipating doing this, to try to get all this stuff to me by Thursday.
Okay, and I would much rather have it as an agenda item. So if anyone's listening, if you could get it in by late tomorrow, that way we could actually get it as an agenda item and not have to do it as a new business. That would be much better. All right, so we're gonna go to old business. I don't think we have anything new on Lakeville Hospital or Lakeville Country Club. Selectman La Camera or Maureen, anything on that?
Yeah, as far as the Lakeville Hospital is concerned, I have been in touch with the developer, the proposed developer for that property. And within the next couple of weeks, he'd like to come in and, you know, present his project, you know, to the board. And then, of course, to the planning board as well. Uh, it's gonna be extremely difficult to do it in the next week because of all the meetings that we already have. So we'll try to work around the schedule and let you know what the options are.
Okay.
As far as the Lakeville Country Club, we, we sent a follow-up letter, you know, clarifying the, what the, what the costs are for the back taxes, if that's the plan we go through. And we, from what I understand, Maureen, unless you have, uh, we still haven't received a response back from the current owner.
Maureen looks frozen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
What's going on with your internet over there?
I know.
What?
We have issues.
Okay. I don't know, did you hear me, Tracy and Maureen, or not?
I just heard you say we sent a follow-up letter clarifying the amount of back taxes.
Right, we haven't got a response, we haven't got a response yet.
From the owner. Okay. That's what I knew as far as Friday also, Rich. So, and I was at Town Hall Friday, so. Okay. Um, the other thing that is about six weeks ago, maybe five weeks ago, we had discussed at a meeting, meeting with an appraiser for the MBTA on aneesement. And that work has now been done. And we did get an update from the Cemetery Commission. So the MBTA needs an easement, which is going to run past a town-owned piece of property. And there also happens to be a Cemetery Commission there. So we did have Mr. Upham, who's the Cemetery Commissioner. Him and a few of us met out there. And he did send us some information on that. So we do have an update on that. I don't know if we need to read that or not, but he was out there, we were out there. So, you know, we have a plan to make sure that the town's interest is definitely protected as well as the cemetery's there. So that was just an update to to that. I don't even know where that paperwork is. How did all my paperwork get lost this week?
It's in with the new business, on the second page it should be.
There you are, you're back.
I, I couldn't hear, so I had to turn it off and try again. Just, everything just stopped for me, so.
Yeah, you were frozen. It was a good, it was a good look.
Yeah, thanks.
So prior to approving aneesement for the MBTA, the Cemetery Commission will require an agreement of the following conditions. So this is what the Cemetery Commission is proposing. Proper must first have a ground penetration examination, accessibility to howl and road, safeguard the cemetery monuments, footstones, and markers from vehicles. The MBT agrees to install granite posts and steel rails along the entire front of the cemetery. So I'm just summarizing. It is important that any visitor to include town maintenance, funeral, hearse, and vault vehicle be able to turn around to exit the cemetery. The MBTA, we hope, will agree to maintain the access road as may be required in perpetuity. So it's really nice to know that Mr. Upham, our Cemetery Commissioner, is on top of this for us and has provided us some good communication on that. Rich, any other old business on your end?
Well, the other old business that, you know, the, as you probably know, the Senate and the House have finally passed a bill that having to do with town meeting quorum and has been signed by the governor. So there's very strict timeframes that we have to look at and what needs to be done. So I know that you tried to get a hold of the town moderator to participate here, but we really need to get this resolved, I believe, Tracy. We need to get it resolved by Friday, I think, Maureen, Tracy, to, to do this.
Friday, you have a meeting at 11 o'clock to vote on the quorum requirement.
Okay. So we are scheduled for a meeting anyways, right?
We are on Friday at 11.
That meeting was scheduled for.
Okay.
So that meeting, though, was.
Yeah, it was posted last week. So it was advertised last week and it was posted this week.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm down.
All right, that counts as the seven days though, correct?
Correct, and then Lillian has to, after we vote it, the wording is kind of weird, but after we vote it, Lillian has 10 days and then has to the, is it the Attorney General, Tracy?
Attorney General, yeah.
Is that after? Boy, we're really having trouble here at the end of that, aren't we?
I know, I'm texting the IT guy right now.
Something's messed up. Yeah. But if we wait till Friday, Maureen, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Then do we have to have it 10 days prior to?
Nope. Nope, so, uh, Fri- the only reason we had to wait till Friday was because of when the ad went in. And it had to be seven days from when the ad went in. And then the eighth day is Friday, and that's why we chose that. And then after we vote, I talked to counsel on this because the wording was kind of ambiguous. And he, and he said, "Just submit it after you vote it to the AG's office. It doesn't matter," you know, "within 10 days." He thinks these, the 10 days were in case we changed our mind, which I don't know why we would. But we just submit it after and we have 10 days in between then. They're not approving them, they're just keeping them on record.
Okay. So Lillian, between now and Friday, I would, yeah, between now and Friday, I assume that you'll talk to the town moderator then, or?
Yep, Katie is available on, on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Yep, she will be attending the meeting.
Yeah, I did speak to her today, just so I made sure that she knew all this stuff, and she did. And I think she said, "Maureen," that she was gonna be speaking to you soon also, so.
Yep, tonight, I have a, I have a meeting with her at 7:30 tonight.
Okay, okay. So hopefully, you know, we can vote this reduced quorum. And at that time, we can have a conversation with her. And we can discuss, you know, what we feel is a good reduced quorum and all the other things, so.
And the other stuff we'll be talking tonight about is the way it's gonna look for town meeting, you know, contingency plans for issues, spacing constraint, temperature concerns, all those type of things. We'll be talking about those two tonight.
Okay. I'd really, because the state stressed that seven-day notification, I'd really like, I mean, we're having such problems today. I don't know if we can, you know, try to do some sort of live or take live questions or at a minimum do Facebook questions. But I just really want people to have the opportunity to weigh in on it because it is voting for the town budget, which is a town meeting process. So if we can work on trying to make sure that we can have access to at least some comments, that would be worth.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Do you want to put this out on the website and social media inviting residents to attend? And if they want to attend, they would need to contact us to get login information?
Because we could give them a phone number to call in for, for call-ins.
Yep.
And have them wait in a waiting room and have one of us operate that waiting room. So there are options. I, I think I'm with you, though, as far as, you know, as much participation as we can and answer anyone's questions. But I'll put as much information as I can about what they've given us for the reduced quorum and, and why anyone would want to, you know, play with the quorum for that. And it's just because if we don't get the quorum, we don't get a budget and we can't move forward.
Um, I, I really feel like that I'd like people to be heard on that. And at least on the other end, if, you know, at least we know that we've done everything we possibly can to make it a, you know, transparent process here, then I will feel better about that as well. Because reducing the quorum, and again, if 100 people show up, 100 people get to vote. But if 100 people don't show up and we do a reduced quorum, we can still get town business done. But I would really like to make it just as transparent of a process as possible.
Jose just chimed in and concurred that it would be better to have audio only because the video uses too much bandwidth. So we could offer up a phone call for anyone that would like to comment. We can, we can give them that phone number.
Okay, so maybe we should just plan on that.
Okay.
Okay. Jose, are you there with us? Is he with us? There he is.
He is.
Do you have any concerns about that, that we could?
Yeah.
Decisions that would have to be done by us? Or is it really just a technology kind of thing? I don't want, if we take one question, I don't want to have the people in the other and not get to ask a question. I want it to be equitable, you know, I want it to be fair for everybody.
It's just a band issue. We have so many dead zones in Lakeville for cellular signals that it would make much more sense to have them in a waiting room on the phone and then just let them all in. The only problem with, on the phone, is that we can't raise our hands for you to see or there's no indication as who wants to be recognized. So it would, it would be better for video, but their personal connections to the internet really have a big influence on the quality of our audio and video too, as Rich is having problems today with signal. So we would have to, I don't know how we would, I guess we would open up to voice recognition, but then you'd, like a press conference where everybody's yelling for recognition. Air.
But they're.
No. We also have the issue where it should be Lakeville residents, correct?
We, we have no way to lock anyone out.
I don't know, that makes it difficult because, you know, there, there is a problem with having people Zoom bomb us also because there is the anonymity of, of the phone call. But maybe we have a sign up ahead of time of people? Or maybe people could submit questions ahead of time?
And give the password only to those who sign up ahead.
And then everyone else can contribute through Facebook? But anyone that really wants to have something to say can, can call in and be identified ahead of time?
Yeah, we could, we could ask them to just send an email in, to request the phone number. And then we could run them through the town clerk voter registration base to see if they are a registered voter or reside in Lakeville. And then that would be a way for us to keep it to Lakeville people only.
I mean, that, that is what happens at town meeting. People register in with the clerks, people there out front, and they get their voting card from there. And they sit, you know, anyone that's not part of the town that may be able to speak has to be recognized, so. I, I don't really know what we do here. I'm open to suggestions. Rich, do you have any ideas?
I think it sounds a little complicated. What I think we ought to do is continue with the chat that we're currently using over Facebook, number one. Number two is that, you know, since we're gonna be putting this information out on our website, if people have any questions or concerns, they could send an email, you know, to Tracy or Maureen, asking the specific question. And then we will answer the question on Friday.
Okay. I agree. And, and the, the town system allows for emails to come to, I don't know if all the Selectmen emails come to me or if they come to either one of us, Rich, so you and I can also see what we get and make sure they get put into Maureen and Tracy's list. But I'm afraid the technical, I always, in the back of my mind, you know, have the talking that I've done with the attorneys saying, you know, if everyone can't have access, then it's not necessarily, you know, a good process. So I think we've done okay practicing a few times with Facebook questions. I think we should just keep it to that. And then whatever questions people may send into the Selectman's office.
Are you doing questions to each article, or?
No, questions about the quorum.
Questions?
In the quorum.
Specifically that one issue.
Yeah, because that's what Friday is about. Now, at the warrant review, that's gonna be even more difficult.
Yes.
So I, I would say at the warrant review, I will share the materials as we're talking about them just for clarity for everyone. So I'll have that readily available for everyone to read along with. If, I think that'll take some of the pain out of it.
So Kevin Rutledge had a suggestion. He said, "We can let one person in at a time from the waiting room." So kind of, kind of like people calling into a radio station, a radio show. Think about it that way.
Okay.
But if you can gather the questions ahead of time.
I'm right. We can also, that way too, if we gather the questions ahead of time, we can also, like, rule out the doubles, let's say. Whereas if we're letting people in one at a time, I don't know if they can continue to listen. So maybe their question has already been asked and answered.
I don't know if they can listen in the waiting room.
Right. So we could have multiple people coming in to ask the same question.
I would flow along with this story. I don't think so, Kevin. Okay.
All right, so I think we'll do this. I, I don't think this requires a vote anywhere. I just think it's for clarification. I think we just advertise. I think we just advertise everything we have and we advertise the fact that we're going to be discussing on Friday the reduced quorum. And if people have questions about the reduced quorum or, I mean, I don't want to say, then again, they can make a suggestion on what they think a reduced quorum is, but for the record, the state is saying that at a minimum, we can have 10% of our quorum, of our typical quorum. So our quorum is 100 people, so that would mean we would have, 10% is 10 people. I know we've had suggestions of 20%, of 40%, but again, the point of reducing the quorum is to try to get town business done, so. At the end of the day, we will have to make that call, Selectman LaCamera and I, and along with the moderator. So I'm willing to listen to what people have to say, though. So if people want to weigh in, they can access my email through the town system. My email is lfabian@lakevilleMA.org. Com, I don't know, someone tell me. Yeah. So, and Maureen, I don't care if you put my email out there, too, for people to, you know, if they feel more comfortable sending me a question, I'll just make sure that whatever questions I get to, we'll compile them all together, that way we can answer everyone's questions. Maybe we'll have the same five questions from 20 different people, so.
I can keep a running list of them.
Okay.
And would you like me to send out just a quick email notice to our boards, committees, and commissions to let those members know that we're gonna be having this discussion on Friday?
Yep, that would be a great idea, Tracy, thank you. I think there's only, what, maybe the the schools, I think, that have their own separate warrant item? I can't remember what all the other ones are, but I think most of them are-
I think Tracy was talking about the quorum, Leah.
Yes, I'm gonna send the quorum out. But I can also send the warrants as well in the same email, just so they have them.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I think it's only, so like, Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee so that they know, because they actually have an item on here and they would need to know that 10% of the people or whatever we decide, it may be decided by just 10% of the people, so.
Well, I send the warrants out to all the department heads and the boards, committees, and commissions anyway, so I'll just kill two birds with one stone and do one email and get it out to everybody.
Okay, and if they have issues, they can do the same thing. They can, you know, send the questions to Maureen, to you, Tracy, to me, to Rich, whatever. Okay. All right.
Just one more thing about the warrant review. Certainly, you know, as Tracy just pointed out, we always send it out to all the commissions and the boards. And we will also, this is just strictly to the boards and the department heads, Tracy. You know, Maureen and I will discuss the budget, the draft budget tomorrow. And then we'll send that out, you know, as well. And the department heads and any boards or commission, if they want to participate in the warrant review, then tell them to let you know, and then we'll send them the access code, you know, to do that, so. Okay?
Yep.
Then the other thing, what I would do is that, you know, for the warrant review, since it's already out there on the website, okay, add a message on there saying that we're gonna be doing this Facebook Live, a chat, where you can ask any questions. And if you don't want to do that, if you have a question, you know, on the warrant, you know, please send it to the Selectman's office and we'll answer your question during the warrant review. Right? Okay.
All right, I think we have that all covered. Is everyone clear? Tracy, I see you smiling. So are you, Maureen.
My head's just like, phew.
I know, I know. You guys have, you girls, I should say, have done a lot of work, a lot of unexpected, unforeseen, unprecedented work. So, anything else that can come before the meeting? Is this the first meeting that's gonna be less than an hour? Oh my God.
We got two seconds left, hurry up.
I will take up those two seconds to again thank Lake Cam publicly, Jose, Craig, Kevin, and anyone else I'm missing. I promised to get a list of everyone's names for being in the background there every single meeting of almost every single board and commission. We couldn't be doing it without you folks, so we appreciate Lake Cam very much. Anyways, that's it for me. Anybody else? All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion. All those in favor? Fabian, aye.
LaCamera, aye.